Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being with us tonight. Without any objection, we'll reconvene from executive session. And we will begin with our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, I'd like to read some lyrics by Chris Tumlin. The lyrics are entitled "How Great Is Our God." "The splendor of a king clothed in majesty, that all the earth rejoice, all the earth rejoice. He wraps himself in light and darkness tries to hide, and trembles at his force, and trembles at his force. Age to age he stands, and time is in his hands, beginning and the end, beginning and the end. The Godhead, Godhead, three and one, Father, Spirit, Son, lion and the lamb, lion and the lamb. Name above all names, worthy of all praise, my heart will sing, how great is our God. Name above all names, you are worthy of all praise, and my heart will sing, how great is our God. How great is our God, sing with me, how great is our God, and all will see, how great, how great is our God." Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
And now, Dr. Huff with our board recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Superintendent Ragsdale. Tonight, we have a truly impressive lineup of state athletic champions. We will begin by recognizing the Class 6A Boys 200-yard medley relay swim and dive winners from Hill Grove High School. They are Brady Fields, Cullen Fields, Max LaRocque, and Tori Bartlett. At this time, I'd like to invite them, as well as head coach Nikki Basie, Coach Mark Rogers, Athletic Director Sherri Thurman, and Principal Christian Suttle to the front to be recognized by the Board. Next, we are pleased to announce that the top athlete of the 6A Girls 100-yard breaststroke is Lexi Glon of Walton High School. At this time, I would like to invite Lexi, Coach Sharon Lockron, Assistant A.D. Jeff Milton, and Principal Judy Walton to the front to be recognized by the Board and our Superintendent.
Excuse me a moment. That's, uh, Lexi Glon is from Lassiter High School, and Brittany Hughes is her head coach. And she did, in fact, win the 100 breaststroke.
Okay.
But I don't think they're here tonight.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right. From Walton High School, I believe that we have the winners of the 200-yard freestyle relay here this evening? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. They are Evan Arsenault, Gabby Gaunt, Melissa Cox, and Emma Cole. So at this time, I'd like to invite them to the front along with their coach and A.D. Jeff Milton and Principal Judy MacNeil. I am delighted to announce that the 6A Wrestling 195-pound state champion is Carlin Powell of Hill Grove High School. At this time, I'd like to invite Carlin, Coach Sean Slinska, Athletic Director Sherri Thurman, and Principal Christian Suttle to the front to be recognized by the Board and the Superintendent. At Pope High School, we have the 6A Wrestling 160-pound state champion Abe Elias. So at this time, I would like to invite Abe, Coach Jim Haskin, Coach Chris Kiefer, and Principal Robert Downs to the front of the room to be recognized. And last but not least, we'd like to recognize the McKeachan Girls Basketball Team for becoming the 6A State Champions by beating number-one ranked Tucker. With this win, McKeachan became the first school to win three straight girls' titles in the class since 2007, and the first to win four in five seasons since 1993. At this time, I would like to invite team members, Coach Phyllis Arthur, Assistant Principal Crystal Watley, and Principal Regina Montgomery to join me at the front of the room to be applauded as the state basketball champs for the third consecutive year. Also in March, we observe National Music in Our Schools Month. This program raises awareness of the importance of music education for all children and reminds citizens that school is where all children should have access to music. I would like to invite Dr. Missia Rossi, Supervisor of Choral Music, Theater, and Dance, to join us at the front of the room to be recognized by the Board for National Music in Our Schools Month. During March, students in our schools participate in a celebration of the visual arts through National Youth Art Month. This program emphasizes the value of art education for all children and encourages support for quality school art programs. I would like to ask Judy Condon, Supervisor of Visual Arts, to join us at the front of the room to be recognized by the Board and Superintendent Ragsdale for National Youth Art Month. The Cobb County School District was pleased to honor School Social Worker Week this March 7th through 11th. We would like to express our deepest gratitude and respect for the men and women who performed this challenging and critical role in our schools. At this time, I would like to invite Anna Murphy, Supervisor of School Social Workers, to the front of the room as we salute School Social Worker Week. It seems only fitting that we now announce the Cobb County School District School Social Worker of the Year. That individual is Katrina Fowler. With Cobb for the last 13 years, Ms. Fowler serves as the district's community liaison to the Cobb Bar Association. This organization provides financial assistance to local families in need. According to her peers, Ms. Fowler works tirelessly to connect families with such resources. Each year, she helps organize community events such as the Sleigh Bells on the Square 5K Race and Mus Ministries Toy Shop. In addition, Fowler manages the Save It Forward Food Pantry located at Barber Middle School and can often be found delivering the food herself. She is currently the District 5 President for the School Social Worker Association of Georgia. So at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Fowler along with Anna Murphy to the front of the room to be recognized by our Board and our Superintendent. Ms. Ida Flores Ortega has earned the Distinction of Foreign Language Association of Georgia as the 2016 Teacher of the Year. This distinction, based on her use of strategies to enhance students' interests in gaining proficiency of a foreign language, were awarded. And at this time, I would like to ask Ida to come to the front with Principal Jean Walker to be recognized by our Board and our Superintendent. The Foreign Language Association of Georgia has announced the recipient of its 2016 Administrative Support of the Year Award. That individual is our very own Board Chair, Susan Thayer. This award recognizes an administrator who has given strong and overt support for foreign languages. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Thayer to go through the line as we honor her. Thank you. That concludes our Board recognitions for this evening.
All right, thank you all. We have so much to be proud of in our community and in our school system, and we appreciate all of you. Thank you. All right, this brings us to Board Comments. Mr. Doyle, public comment, sorry. Board comments, public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four speakers who will come and address the Board this evening. Each speaker will be allotted two minutes. So if you'll please come forward as you are called. Our first speaker is Joshua Monte Fouseo, who will discuss STEM and school choice. And he will be followed by Jeff Danbreville.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. You'd be quite excited about the guy who follows me. Special little kid. But I'm here to talk about STEM and school choice. My daughter is a 14-year-old at McCleskey Middle School. At a young age, she decided she wanted to be pediatric surgeon, partially inspired by my nurse. My wife was a nurse. Maybe by my military service, hopefully, maybe. But definitely by the great Anatomy TV show. So she decided she wanted to be a pediatric surgeon. So, very motivated kid, great grades, straight A student, works hard, competitive gymnast. She applied to the STEM program. So thanks to a lot of the hard work of the folks I'm talking to, we have cool programs in the county like the STEM and Magnet. So she applied to the STEM program. She got accepted. She was very excited into the biomedical tract. And we were not zoned for the school that she got accepted in. So we applied for school choice, went through the process, and were denied school choice. So now, I'm in a situation where I have a high-achieving child that qualifies for a great program that everybody has worked hard to achieve, and she can't attend the school at which she's accepted into. So I'm here just to kind of talk, to ask for exceptions or maybe something to work around the possibility of her being excluded. And other, some of her friends also, because she's in a clique of high-achieving children who are all trying to do things like this, and a lot of them got denied the ability to go to the school where they got accepted to STEM. So 32 seconds left. I just wanted to appeal to you guys to see if there was a possibility of achieving an exception to the school choice that's limiting these kids from going to what they've achieved to get into. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff Danbreville, who will discuss learning resources. And he will be followed by Bryce Payne.
My name is Jeff Danbreville. I come from Garrett Middle School, Osteo, Georgia. I'm here to address the situation about my school to get new learning resources. By taking my idea into consideration about getting new, updated learning resources every two to three years will show improvements to test scores, milestones, and student grades. Our learning resources is outdated, and the last time it been updated was 2005. And if you could please, please provide us with your help so we could get new and updated learning resources. Violators who abuse this, who abuse the learning research should pay a minimum fine up to $50. My idea of funding is should come, some should come from the school events, school activities, and school vending machines. So I would like to ask you guys for permission to get new learning resources for our school, Garrett Middle School. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bryce Payne, who will discuss theater, followed by Anne Faith Adair.
Good evening. My name is Bryce Payne. I'm a 12th grader at Hill Grove High School. I'm a dual enrollment student at Kennesaw State University. I'm the president of the Hill Grove Band. I'm also a model United Nations officer and am the president of Drama at Hill Grove Theater. Also, I'm president of the Thespian Troop 7190. Above that, I am a state thespian officer representing over 4,000 students statewide. One thing that we try to really accommodate to at our school is teaching theater to students who may not otherwise have the opportunity to have a lot of theater in their lives. For one thing, we facilitate meetings. We work around the clock to keep members, officers, and teachers informed as to the workings of Hill Grove Theater. Over the years, we have seen a growth in our membership from 25% from last year to this year, bringing in more students who come on a regular basis to theater and get that essential element of arts in their lives. For one thing, we were able to give them club t-shirts and bring them to not one or two, but five different professional shows in the local area. And we bring them to these shows to give them the arts education that we are missing from our schools on a regular basis. Another thing that we do is we have brought our students to volunteer events. We plan to send a group of delegates to Mus Ministries later this semester. We have sent a group to an animal sanctuary, and we even volunteered at a church fundraiser. Our students are hardworking, and they do a large part in bringing theater out of the building and into the community. And that's why we're here to celebrate Theater in Our Schools Month. Thank you.
Our final speaker, Madam Chair, is Anne Faith Adair, who will discuss theater.
Hello, my name is Anne Faith Adair, and I also attend Hill Grove High School. I am an 11th grader, and I am also an advanced placement student, a Georgia Virtual student, and the leader of our school's FCA. I am the secretary of the Thespian Troop 7190, Thespian Troop at Hill Grove. And the International Thespian Society, the Educational Theater Association, and the American Alliance for Theater and Education have designed this month as March as Theater in Our Schools Month. Together, these three organizations hope to make an impact in our school worldwide by promoting arts advocacy, by having thespian troops pledge to advocate for theater funding in their schools. You can see the impact they are having as countless students are taking to social media their school board meetings and even county board meetings to spread the word about the importance of theater in our schools. On a national level, international thespian officers visited Congress on Capitol Hill for Arts Advocacy Day to appeal to them for an increased funding for the arts. You can see the impact it's having on the world by searching most social media outlets for hashtag #TIOs16 and hashtag Theater in Our Schools. Our message is widespread, and our message for those with the power to increase the funding for theater arts, to extend budgeting for theater and the increased importance in theater in our schools. Thank you for supporting theater in our schools.
Thank you, speakers, and particularly students. We always enjoy seeing you. We have a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Sweeney, motion to approve, second. Mr. Wheeler, seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, unanimous. All right, thank you. All right, we have one item under Board Business, and that's our Facilities and Technology Report. Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Facilities and Technology, Citizens Oversight Committee met on March 24th, 2016. I attended the meeting, and they approved, I should say, they voted to support Discussion Agenda's Items Number 1, 2, 3, and 4 on this evening's agenda.
Great, thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Okay, do we have a motion to approve our agenda tonight? Mr. Morgan, Mr. Sweeney, I'm sorry, Mr. Scamahorn seconded that one. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, okay, unanimous on that. All right, this brings us to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I've got a couple of videos queued up tonight. The first is, as you all know and participated in, we had Read Across America. And we had our film crews out and about to film some of the reading. So that's the first video we'll show tonight. If you can roll the video, Read Across America.
Happy birthday, Dr. Seuss. March 2nd, 2016. Myself and several Board members from the Cobb County Board of Education read to students throughout the district today. Rain when it's fallished, I'm going to protect them no matter how smallish.
You may like them. You will see. You may like them in a tree. I do not like them anywhere. I do not like green eggs and ham. I do not like them. Sam I am.
What an opening night! What a night! What a sight!
It's super important for them to be strong readers as early as possible because we know if you're a proficient reader, the chances of you not only graduating from high school but being a positive and productive citizen exponentially increases. So this is something that I think we most definitely need to continue to do.
And in a car, and in a tree. They are so good, so good you see. So I will eat them in a box, So I will eat them in a box, and I will eat them with a fox, and I will eat them in a house, and I will eat them with a mouse, and I will eat them here and there, say, I will eat, I will eat them anywhere.
The other half of the team is my wife, Mrs. Scamahorn.
Lucky, you're really quite lucky. Some people are much more, oh, ever so much more.
I think we do a great tag team together, team teaching, and we get a lot more interest, I believe, from the students as we read our books.
We represent the community.
I think the fact that we celebrated Dr. Seuss, we celebrated reading today, and had a very enthusiastic audience to read to, so it's been a great day here.
More truffle of trees into thneed, which everyone, everyone, everyone needs.
You do not like them, so you say. Try them, try them, and you may.
Today, Read Across America, we're focusing on reading, and that is just a very important topic for us to take on. It's a huge goal to try to accomplish, but we're up to the task, and all of the teachers and principals, especially the students, are excited about it and looking forward to attaining that goal.
From now on, I'm going to protect them with you. And the young kangaroo in his pouch said, "Me too." From sun in the summer, from rain when it's fallish, I'm going to protect them no matter how smallish. Yay!
I don't think anybody can beat Mr. Chastain, though. I think the, yeah, exactly, and I'm not going to try either. That is absolutely correct. Also, as we heard, recognized earlier, this is also Youth Art Month, and we have a short video to show some of the accomplishments and accolades of our art department, and we all congratulated Judith Condon earlier. So if we can roll the Youth Art Month video. So obviously, we've got some tremendous artists as students in our district, and I'll just give one shout out. We had the Friends of McKeatran Luncheon this week, and they had some art on display there. And one of the displays was, as you saw in the video, some of the jewelry. And actually, the students in the class at McKeatran are getting certifications to be able to make jewelry, and they're actually, some of the students are going on a cruise ship this summer and actually selling the jewelry on the ship. So tremendous, tremendous example of school to work over at McKeatran, and I'm sure other schools are doing that as well, but just a shout out to McKeatran. Right now, I'm going to call on John Adams to bring items requiring action following executive session. Mr. Adams.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Madam Chair, members of the Board. It's my pleasure to present the Human Resources Personnel Report for March 24, 2016. The administration recommends the approval of the identified employment actions of those individuals listed on the personnel action report and as amended in the addendum as discussed in executive session. We do have two principal-level and higher-position recommendations. First of all, recommendation that Adam Hill be reassigned to principal at Nikajak Elementary School effective July 1, 2016. And regretfully recommend that you accept the retirement of Dr. Angela Huff, Chief of Staff, to be effective June 1, 2016.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I make a recommendation that we accept the Superintendent's Personnel Action Report as presented, and regretfully with regard to Ms. Angela Huff.
I think we have agreement on that. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Mr. Banks, second. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Can we have discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion. Yes, discussion, please, Mr. Banks.
I concur with Mr. Sweeney about Dr. Angela Huff. To give you a little bit of history, about seven and a half years ago, when I came on the Board, Ms. Huff was the principal at Mountain View Elementary School. And I can remember the first time I ever met her, she was busy on her computer, working on her doctorate degree. At that time, this was, I think, at night. I don't know why I was over there at night, but I was over there at night. But ever since then, we have become friends, I hope, and we've had a lot of conversations. We've had a lot of laughs. We've joked with each other, and it's been a very great relationship. And I will say this, that I am thankful to God that he put Angela Huff in my path. So I'm going to vote no, but it's a symbolic no, because I don't want her to leave. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do we have a second for the personnel? I assume then you were not seconded. Okay, Mr. Wheeler seconds that.
Do we need to spread those out?
Mr. Wheeler has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Dr. Huff for her service. Since I've been on the Board, she's been a pleasure to work with and always helpful, and anything you ask her to do, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Do we have a second for this emotion? Mr. Banks made a second for that? Okay. All in favor of accepting the personnel report, please raise your hand. All right. Abstain?
No.
No?
I vote yes on Part 1 and no on Part 2.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Do we have that? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I believe you have one additional item.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, we had no legal matters our land. So yes, that brings us to Mr. Chastain. You have a motion for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I make a motion to approve the amendment to the Superintendent's Contract to extend the contract term through March 23 of 2019. I'm sorry.
I'll do that again. There we go. I make a motion to approve the amendment to the Superintendent's Contract to extend the contract term through March 23 of 2019.
Mr. Sweeney, I believe, seconded that. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Exdale. Anything else on that? Okay, all right, that brings us to our consent agenda. During our work session, we put four items on our consent agenda. If there is no objection, we will make those, mark those as approved. Is there any objection? Okay, thank you. Those items are approved. Brings us to our discussion agenda items, and item number one.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'll ask Mr. Adams to come and bring the remainder of the discussion items.
Thank you, sir. Discussion Agenda Item 1, as discussed in detail during the day meeting, is a recommendation for authorization and purchase 125 school buses from Bluebird, Yancey, and Thomas Peach State Freightliner. Using the statewide competitive bid, we're recommending that you authorize the purchase of 125 school buses, 75 of the 72-passenger buses, and 50 of the 48-passenger special needs buses. Recommend that you accept the authorization to purchase these from a combination of Bluebird, Yancey, and Thomas Peach State Freightliner. Estimated total cost as budgeted in SPOLOST, estimated cost to be $11.105 million. This, by the way, will be the last SPOLOST IV bus purchase, the rationale being that we can replace our older buses with the newer buses, resulting in even safer buses and lower operational costs, effectively decreasing our average age by about two years of our fleet. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move that we accept the Agenda Item Number 1 as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Sweeney seconds. All those in favor?
Could we have a discussion?
All right, any discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one quick. What's the total number of buses of all sizes that we have in our fleet?
It's just over 1,100, 1,171.
And for the purposes of our audience, the 125 is fairly small number, and that we have a program that we phase out those under different, several different criteria, correct?
Yes, sir. We look at a variety of things: age, mileage, repair history. And this will allow us to phase out buses ranging in age from model year 1996 on forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make sure our audience knew
Thank you.
That the 125 is a fairly small number. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. All right, item two.
Item 2, recommendation for approval to award a contract for freezer and cooler replacement at various schools. Also, in accordance with SPOLOST IV, you see that Harrison High School, Nicholson Elementary, and Rocky Mount Elementary are scheduled to receive freezer and cooler replacements. We're recommending that you award the contract to Sherrock Contracting out of Mableton, Georgia, Mableton, Georgia, and authorize a superintendent to execute the contract. The cost to be $585,490 as budgeted in SPOLOST IV. This will be a summer project with a scheduled substantial completion date of July 22, 2016. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept item number two? Mr. Scamahorn makes a motion. Is there a second? Second, is there any discussion? No discussion, then we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimously passes. Thank you. Item number three.
Number 3, recommendation for approval to award a contract for roof replacement at Frye Elementary School. Once again, in accordance with SPOLOST IV, Frye is scheduled to receive roof replacement. You can see more details on the attached facility summary as highlighted, essentially a new roof at Frye. We're recommending that you award a contract to Tecta America Southeast LLC out of Coming, Georgia, and authorize a superintendent to execute the contract with the cost to be $1.572 million, budgeted in SPOLOST IV. Again, a summer project, completion date of July 22, 2016.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item 3? Mr. Scamahorn, motion. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Sweeney seconds. Any discussion? Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Adams, I just want another quick clarification, too, for the benefit of our audience. We have an extensive criteria as to roof replacement and how we go about doing that. It's not pick and choose, correct?
Yes, sir. It's extensive. Our maintenance department does a fantastic job of keeping track of not only the age of roofs, but the condition, requests for service, and they have an extensive criteria to make sure that we do that in an objective fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Again, unanimous. Thank you. Move right along.
Agenda Item Number 4, recommendation for approval to award a contract for HVAC replacement at Hayes Elementary School. Also, in accordance with SPOLOST IV, Hayes is scheduled to receive HVAC replacement, again, per the attached facility summary as highlighted for details. Recommending that you award the contract to Bond Building Services out of Conyers, Georgia, and authorize a superintendent to execute the contract with the cost to be $3.195 million, again, budgeted in SPOLOST IV. Once again, a summer project, completion date of July 22, 2016.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Scamahorn, is there a motion to second? Mr. Banks? Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Again, unanimous. All right, thank you.
And then last, but certainly not least, Agenda Item Number 5, recommendation for approval of architect appointment for the Osburn High School Replacement School. Also, in accordance with SPOLOST IV, we're recommending that you appoint the firm of Chapman, Griffin, Lanier, and Sussenbach, CGLS, as architects for the Osburn High School Replacement Project. Recommend that you approve the appointment, allow us to execute the contract. You see the budget there in accordance with our Board Rule FEAB at 5% of the construction budget and the amount of $1,495,982, again, as budgeted in SPOLOST IV. And allowing us to execute this contract will allow us to begin planning as soon as possible.
Thank you. All right. I would like to move that we accept item number 5. Mr. Banks, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, question?
Mr. Adams, how many IU's will be in the new structure?
It's scheduled for the same number of IU's as in the current structure, as per the notebook. The current Osburn High School, I believe, has, yes, has 106 IU's currently, and it's scheduled for that same number.
And how many students will that equate to?
We think that that will equate to approximately 2,500, which should accommodate our projected capacity peak for Osburn High School.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? All right, thank you, Mr. Adams.
Madam Chair, I'll call Ms. Loretta forward to bring us information on the Board Newsletter.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, and Mr. Superintendent. I'm pleased to present the Board Newsletter for your review, and if you have any changes, please just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other business to be brought before us? Okay, that brings us to Board Member Comments. Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several things I'd like to mention tonight. First on my list was the Kids Cafe Luncheon at Cheetum Hill Elementary School. Had the pleasure of attending that again, and it's outstanding. If y'all ever get the chance to go visit that, I would highly recommend it. Second, congratulations to Varner Elementary School on their 25th anniversary celebration. That was a great night. A lot of people were there. Former Principal Mr. Hood was there, and I'd just like to comment on his comments. He was talking about the school as it was and, you know, still is, but these are kids or children still, and that they need recess and jump rope for heart and events like that. And it kind of hit home with me. I thought that there's, you know, with today's emphasis on testing, 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 that we had a principal that was doing a great job, and I commend him for his service to the district and things he did. Third was the Camp Multiculture Night. This is another outstanding event, and it gets bigger and bigger every year. A lot of the community was there for that. It was a great, great thing. I'd like to also recognize and congratulate Coach Bessesi from Hillgrove for being the Marietta Daily Journal Coach of the Year for swimming and diving. She was here tonight, and I'd like to note that for her. And finally, with School Board Appreciation Week, the post-seven schools, I'd like to thank all of them for an outstanding thing. I mean, I feel like y'all went overboard: letters, cards, food, gifts, the marquee recognition. Thank you all. It's sincerely appreciated. That was a, it's really nice and... That was a, it's really nice, and they do a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say that, like the rest of you, I am sorry to see Dr. Huff apart. And, you know, one of the things I've recently learned is that, you know, even when you don't think, people are watching you. You know, even when you don't think people are watching you, they're watching you. And, you know, Dr. Huff, in the time that I've, God has blessed me to interact with you, you know, one of the biggest lessons I've learned is that my natural disposition is to wear my emotions on my sleeve. And one of the things I learned from you is professionalism, regardless of the circumstance, regardless of whether you agreed, disagreed, thought it was right, thought it was wrong. You always, you've always carried yourself in a very dignified and professional manner, and that has always been inspiring to me. Even when I'm in other places in my life, believe it or not, I think about you, and I think about that smile right there. And, you know, so I just want you to know that whatever you pursue after, you know, leaving Cobb County School District, that I know that people, whoever you interact with or encounter, will be better because of it. And I thank you for so graciously giving up your time and your actions through example to me. So, those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of things. Once again, with Read Across America, it was a great time for me to go out and visit with the third graders at, I believe that was at Bell's Ferry, and then the kindergartners at Blackwell Elementary School. Mrs. Chastain wanted to make sure that I was, looked appropriate for the part, so I thank her again for that. And all you got to do is go to a party store, folks, and you can find the hat and the bow tie, and most of our elementary principals and teachers can tell you where you can, you too can look like Dr. Seuss or Thing One or Thing Two. I'd also like to commend Sprayberry High School's Navy Junior ROTC Program. Lieutenant Commander Dennis Wonders is working on taking his, I believe it's 40, students in the junior ROTC program to the national competition, which is this coming April 1st and 2nd in Pensacola. And I can't go through the whole thing, but they basically, they went to a regional competition and won, and they'll be the only ones, I believe, from Georgia, competing at the national level. And they've been doing some fundraising. If you do a web search for Sprayberry Navy Junior ROTC, you can find out more about what's going on there. And I would like to, Mr. Sweeney and Mr. Banks will say more about this, but I can't, I cannot ignore the fact that, being a Wheeler Wildcat, we celebrated 50 years of the existence of Wheeler High School last weekend. And my wife, who I met at a basketball game when I was in college and came home to visit, we went out and walked around and toured the new lovely school. We looked for the classrooms that we were familiar with from way back in the '70s. And it's just, there's a lot of great things happening out there. And thank you for the board members that supported that. Then, speaking of 50th anniversaries, Daniel Middle School, name for J.J. Daniel, on March 29th will be celebrating in a public ceremony at 5:00 p.m. the 50th anniversary of Daniel Middle School, so the public is welcome. And in light of the fact that we're celebrating the arts, if you can get a ticket, at 7:00 p.m. that evening, they'll be doing, the drama department, Drama Club will be doing Guys and Dolls Junior. I plan to be there. You don't want to miss it. And then, on April 1st, continuing with the arts, Nicholson Elementary School has an International Arts Day. They take the Friday before spring break, and they bring in artists that may be woodcarvers, musicians. Last year, there was a muralist, and they come in and they take over classrooms and show the kids all the different things that you can do with the performing arts and the fine arts. And then they have a lunch in the media center for the artists who participated. And I believe the school, the PTA, they raise the money to be able to provide stipends to these artists who come in to give the kids an idea of how they might express themselves. So I'm looking forward to that on the 1st. And Dr. Huff, it's been a little over a year, and I want to say personally, thank you. You are our messenger. For many of you that don't know, when you're running a big school system and the superintendent's got things on his mind and there's messages that have to be communicated, it could be the weather. There's all sorts of news that the board members have to know, and it's that email that pops up from Dr. Huff. Sometimes the news is fantastic, sometimes the news is sad, as you can imagine. But it's Dr. Huff that makes sure that we know what's going on in our systems, so that when our constituents and people say, "Have you heard about it?", if we've had, it's probably because you read about it, because Dr. Huff informed us. And I want to thank you for being my friend also.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few items. Let me say that Tuesday night, the Lester and Pope High Schools had a staff basketball game. It was very exciting. I'll tell you, we've got some staff members, most of them are coaches, but some of them are not, that are pretty darn good basketball players. Lester led the competition the whole night, but the Pope got within about two points of tying it up and going ahead, but they faltered right at the very end. So that ended up being 76 to 71, so. But it was a great night, and it was, for, the purpose of it was to raise funds for the cancer research and the program they have. Also, I was at the Wheeler Celebration Saturday, and there was a large crowd there. It was very well attended. Superintendent Ragsdale made a speech to the alumni and some of the students. And I want to tell you a couple of stories, and Mr. Gargis, Gargus, rather, might want to do some research on this. This happened back in the '70s. I don't know whether it was just students or parents, I think it was some of both, decided that they need the Wildcat Paws painted on Holt Road. And so they did it. Well, the county didn't like that, so the next day, the county came in and painted over them. Well, surprise, the next night, they were back there again. I don't know how many times the county painted over them, but it was in the paper quite a bit. The county finally gave in, and the Paws stayed. Now, the second story I can tell you about Wheeler, we have an elected public service commissioner who attended and graduated from Wheeler High School. I have it on good authority that he instigated a situation where there were an abundance of crickets donated to the principal's office one night. And I've been assured that really did happen. And there's some other things that happened over the years at Wheeler. Wheeler's been a great school. And also, I want to mention that former board member John Crooks has been very instrumental in getting funds for Wheeler High School, and we've had two major projects over the years that have made Wheeler almost a brand-new school. It's a beautiful school. Also, I want to say, this coming Saturday, the Sprayberry Egg Drop will occur, and that will be from 10 o'clock to 5 o'clock. And you can go out on the Sprayberry website and see the schedule. It's scheduled for different age groups, so they're not all out there at one time. So it's about four or five different groups that will be out there picking up eggs. And if you've ever been, it's exciting. There's a lot of things for the kids to play in, you know, there's a lot of sponsors. And last year, I think there was over 25,000 people attended that egg drop. So it's a big, big deal, and Park it is a premium. Also, I want to say, last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the large group performance evaluations occurred for the Cobb County bands, high school bands. And I want to thank Mr. Barry Morgan, our solicitor general, for being the emcee for that, for those three days. And I also want to thank Chris Farrell, our orchestra and band director, our supervisor, who put all that together and got the evaluators there, and everything went great. There were about, gosh, 50 different performances. I mean, it was, it's huge. And I'll finish up by saying, again, Dr. Huff, you will be missed. Thank you for being a friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks, for encouraging our students not only to break school rules but also federal and state laws. We appreciate it. Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only senior prank that I'm aware of that occurred at Wheeler High School was by God and the weather, when they actually canceled the graduation services because of a heavy rainstorm. And true to form, David Chaproni, a few years later, actually came back and held a graduation ceremony for those students about 30 years later, and it was a remarkable performance. And congratulations to Wheeler on their 50th anniversary, and also to Superintendent Mr. Chastain and Mr. Banks for attending that event. Like to give a shout out, stealing maybe a little bit of Mr. Scamhorn's thunder, but a shout out to John Kelly for Alatuna High School and the wonderful meal that the students there provided for the board this evening. Additionally, I'd like to recognize Walton and the baseball team there. They actually had a 10-0 win over Utah-Bingham High School yesterday, and that was in the USA Baseball National High School Invitational. Walton High School's baseball team is nationally ranked, I think, within the top 10. I think even was up there at top 5 at one time. And then, lastly, Dr. Angela Huff, thank you. We'll miss you. I've clearly enjoyed your friendship, your professionalism, and wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scamhorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Sweeney, for recognizing Alatuna, and I'll second that. What a wonderful meal, not only from Alatuna, of course, tonight, but across this county. We have programs in a number of our high schools that are just professionally rated as far as culinary programs. Excuse me. Also, I'd like to second what Mr. Banks has to say about, had to say about the egg drop at Sprayberry. It's a wonderful event, just fantastic just to go observe. And I hope those two eight-year-olds that keep beating me to my eggs, I hope they're not there this year. So. And next, I would like to mention that a point, I don't know if it's a point of personal privilege, it is about school. But this past Saturday, at the Cobb County Republican Conference or Convention, a resolution was attempted to be entered into, into the platform, and fortunately, it was tabled, but it was entered into, and it's a one-page resolution, so I'll just, the gist of it is, is they're wanting to significantly change public schools by changing the way the money flows. So I would get involved, and I believe the MDJ has had an article on it or will have. So make sure, if you would, come up to speed on that. And although well-intentioned, this resolution, and well-intentioned as they want to try to improve education, it's extremely misguided and would not help public schools at all. Then, next, I would like to thank North Cobb High School. This past Monday, they invited me to throw out the first pitch at one of their varsity games, and thank goodness, Lord, I didn't throw it into the dirt. So, and thank you to North Cobb High School. I would like to also thank the staff, the Cobb County School District staff, to continue looking into the issue that happened down in Macon with the basketball championship games. I understand that we're still looking into that, and so thank you to all those involved in that, and we'll wait with patience to see how that goes. I'm optimistic that we'll find a resolution to that. Next, I'd like to also recognize our men and women in blue. Since last we met, we've lost two more in this country, and we are now about 15 officers, men and women, that have lost their lives in the line of duty since January the 1st. It's just absolutely unacceptable. It's outrageous, and we, and I don't know what we can do about it, but we need to try, and we need to make penalties extremely harsh for those that want to do things like that. And my prayers to the families of those police officers. More congratulatory is to the superintendent, congratulations on the extension of your contract. It speaks well not only of you, but your staff, and the accelerated pace that we're improving education here in Cobb County. Thank you so much. And on to some even more important than the superintendent, no offense, Dr. Huff. You will be, as all have said, sorely missed, but none less than for me, because in all the breakfasts and lunches that you and I have attended, I certainly appreciate you helping me find the correct fork and to help me stay in line during those lunches. So, and there'll be more coming, because you have a little more time with us, I hope. And so, but thank you so much, and you're irreplaceable. Not only from the way you do your job, your professionalism, you have to do your job, some of the boards, as well as the superintendents. And I certainly, there's not enough money that they could offer me to me not only do your job but be able to do your job. So I'm sure you will be doing other worthwhile things in the coming years. So thank you again, and thank you for being so gracious. I'm usually not that windy, Madam Chair, but thank you for allowing me to speak. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Ragsdale.
Yes, ma'am. First of all, many of you have hit on some of the things I was going to say, Wheeler being one, but that was certainly a great event Saturday to celebrate the 50th anniversary. And Ed Thayer was there, which, who was the principal when I came to the district, so that was neat to see. Past principals and even a past superintendent was in attendance as well. We also had a meeting this week in Smyrna, and I just want to give a shout out to the community from Smyrna, because it was a very positive event. We probably had about 100 or so come out and listen to us talk and pose some questions to us, and it really just showed a tremendous interest from the community in the school district and in particular, their schools. And as one of our priorities for the district is to make Cobb the best place to teach, lead, and learn, we've got a couple of job fairs that are listed on our webpage coming up in the very near future, and we encourage all those that want employment in the best school district in the land to come out to those job fairs. It was, it was my pleasure this week to be able to go to McCleskey and Dickerson and take a look in some of the classrooms at the great things that are going on out there. And I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Davis from McCleskey. Principal Claire Lyons took us in there and allowed us to see a CTAE class, being able for students, middle school students, being able to get Microsoft certification and Microsoft Office. And some of those students have achieved multiple certifications, some as high as even master certification. So that's just an awesome event, and Ms. Davis was doing a tremendous job in going certainly above and beyond for that class. And then at Dickerson, Principal Carol Brink took us into some things, and it's no secret to most of you that I have never been very much of an Apple fan, being from the IBM side of the house. But I tell you, after going into the, to the music lab that Carol has created out there with obviously Apple laptops and keyboards and microphones and digitizers, it was just a tremendous, tremendous experience to see those kids engaged, being able to create music. When I was their age, there was not a lot of technology associated with music. There was a lot of just having to do it by the seat of your pants. So it's, it's just a tremendous thing to be able to see the kids excelling in that area. Angela, you know, it's sad, and a happy
Angela, you know, it's, it's sad and a happy moment for you, I know. We don't have any Kleenex out there, because there's no crying in education, but, you know, not sure what we're going to do in Executive Cabinet without the member that is known to be uplifting and edifying. I'm not sure how we're going to survive that, because those of us that remain are certainly So, so thank you in all seriousness, Angela. You've been a tremendous member of our team, and I quoted to the paper, and I'll say it again now, you know, it's, it's great to have people that can do a tremendous job, and that's your number-one task, is trying to find those people that can do the best job, but to have a person that's a great person, that brings out the most in, in the job that you do, because it just overflows into that, and we certainly appreciate everything you've done for not only us, but for the district, and spending over 28 years in one place is just a tremendous testimony, and especially a testimony to those, to her spending it here in Cobb. You know, she started in Gwinnett and figured out that that was not the place to be, and then needed to move over to Cobb, which is the place to be. And if I hadn't mentioned, we got two job fairs coming up next, in a few days. So, but in all seriousness, Angela, we're going to miss you tremendously, but we wish you well, and I know you and Barry are looking forward to being able to get up to Nashville with, with your parents, so that's, that's just a tremendous event for you. Want to wish everybody a Happy Easter, obviously coming up, and then also a Happy Spring Break. I know that this is just a tremendous time to take a deep breath, gear up for the last homestretch, and, you know, believe it or not, board members, just around the corner will be walking students across the stage for graduation, which is just crazy. And finally, thank you to the board. I appreciate the vote of confidence. You know, when we came up with our one-team, one-goal student success, we said that it starts with us, and you guys have just gone above and beyond to be the example, because if, if we can't be the one team and work together, we certainly can't expect the other 15,000 employees to do that. And in this industry, we have the ability to really touch lives and, and shape our future, so I don't think there's any more important of a field that, that anyone can work, and for you guys, we just, I definitely appreciate the vote of confidence you have in me, but also the vote of confidence you have in our employees and in our district, because you guys obviously are elected, but to get out there and run for office, especially to run for a school board position, is certainly commendable. So I greatly appreciate the camaraderie we have and the team that we have, so definitely a sincere thanks to all of you. Thanks.
And you talked about technology, too. I'm a very organized person, and from one board meeting to the next, I start putting things into my notes section so that I have my board comments ready for the next meeting. My phone has died, so that tells you what happens when you rely too much on technology, but for the rest of you, no, you'll be happy, my comments will be mercifully short. But I do want to thank the Cabinet for coming to Smyrna and talking with our community, and we appreciate your time and time away from your families, but it was good for our community to hear from all of you, and we appreciate that. Mr. Ragsdale, we look forward...
Madam Chair, can I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Thank you. All right. So we look forward to working with you in the future and, and moving our school system forward and having a good, successful future. Angela, I've enjoyed working with you for many, many years, and wish you great success. Also, would like to welcome Adam Hill to our community. We're looking forward to having you, but we also are sad to lose Beverly Lloyd. She's been an excellent part of our community, too, but we look forward for, to continued good leadership at Nekka Jack. So with that, I was going to conclude, but Mr. Scammehorn would like the floor again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did overlook one, I believe, important thing, but first, I'd like to apologize for interrupting you. I, I thought you were about ready to conclude and didn't see me, so my apologies. I, I just wanted to go back to one of our speakers, the young man, Garrett Middle School. I was unable to really hear what he was having to say, and maybe others were, but his name's Jeff Denverville, and he, again, he's at Garrett, and he's asking that, for support for, it doesn't say House Bill or Senate Bill Number Nine, where the middle schools and other schools will be getting more guidance and more money for technology. And so anyway, I just wanted to reemphasize, to look into what he was trying to tell us, and also congratulate him for having the courage. He told me out in the lobby that he was just so nervous, he could hardly speak, but he did a great job, and thank you for allowing me to amend that.
Okay, that concludes our meeting. I hope everyone has a happy, restful spring back break, and we'll look forward to everyone coming back with renewed spirit and ready to finish a good school year. Thank you.